We're now reconvening in open meeting. The Board of Supervisors, June 7th meeting.
The first thing the board should do is certify the closed meeting. If you'd like, I can read that statement.
Yes, please.
Do each of you certify, to the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board of Supervisors in closed meeting?
Roll call vote. Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you. Now, I think before we get into the public hearing, Ms. Michelle has information with regards to Dowling Real Estate LLC.
Thank you. This is a public hearing for SE 210302 Dowling Real Estate, tax note number 2848, to replace the special exception conditions of their permit from number 051202, authorizing more than one dwelling on a lot or parcel. On February 6, 2006, a special exception permit was issued to construct a second dwelling on this property with the condition that it not be used for commercial use. The applicant now wishes to amend the conditions of that permit by removing no commercial use, that the companion application for a special use permit may be issued for the use of the structure as a tourist home. The Health Department commented that septic system was permitted as of June 17, 2020, for seven bedrooms, but does not yet have a final approval. The Planning Commission held their preliminary review on this application on April 21, 2021, in which the commission recommended to move this application to the board without a recommendation by vote of seven to zero. At the May 26 BZA meeting, they approved the companion application for the use of the structure as a tourist home, contingent upon the board amending this permit to remove the condition of no commercial use. And the applicant's attorney is present for any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Mr. Curry?
I do want to just clarify for the record that, as Ms. Summers stated, more than one dwelling or lot on a parcel is not a use permitted by right in any zoning district here in the county. However, the Board of Supervisors can consider whether the use is appropriate on a site-by-site basis through a special exception process in the agricultural zoning district within which this parcel resides. Your Rappahannock County Code, Section 17047G, states that a special permit or special exception will only be granted if the applicant can satisfy the requirements of this section, of this Article 6, and the proposed use is otherwise lawfully permitted. The burden is on the applicant to satisfy such requirements. With that, I would welcome input from the applicant's representative.
Mr. Brown?
Good evening. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Curry. As Ms. Summers, I'm Michael Brown, of course, representing the applicant Dowling Real Estate. Mr. Dowling, I'm hopeful is attending by Zoom this evening. I don't know if the Zoom link is operational or not.
There's a Dave. There's a Dave on Zoom.
That's probably not yet. No, okay. Ms. Summers accurately summarized the posture of this case. The, this property is the 79 and 1/2 acre Blue Rock Inn property. You're all familiar with the inn structure itself. It's not currently operational. That's the subject of another application that's working its way through the system. It's presently pending before the Planning Commission. There is a small caretaker cottage that exists on the property that sits behind the Blue Rock Inn property. This structure that we're speaking about this evening is a, is a largest house that Gary Harvey, when he was the owner of the property, proposed to build on the, on the property. It was, again, it was a, there was a question about it being a second dwelling on, on one 79 acre parcel. He came before the board then for a special exception permit, and it was granted, subject to two conditions, that, of course, he'd get a Health Department approval, which was issued, and that there may be no commercial use of the property, of the structure, rather. The, he got basically a shell of a house built and then failed to finish that structure, so it was never used, never put in use, never occupied. Mr. Dowling, as part of the overall effort to, to sort of reestablish and rehabilitate the Blue Rock Inn, has sought to get the approval to the use of this, for the use of this structure as a tourist home. We believe that maybe part of the board's reluctance or caution back in 19, I think it was 96, when they issued that, or was it, I'm sorry, 2006? Oh, five. I'm sorry. I'm getting my special, getting my special permits mixed up. Back in '05 or '06, when they, when they issued this special exception, was the idea that maybe there was a, this, this was going to be rented out on a room, room-by-room basis. There was some concern about that. That is not the intention of the applicant here. It would be led as a traditional, what we think of now as this, a traditional tourist home use, buy the, buy the house to a family, not, not, not room-by-room. We've also, in filing the application, been, kept in mind the overall limits that are in our code regarding the number of guest rooms that you can have in connection with either a country inn use or a conference center use. So, in connection with that special permit that's before the Planning Commission, where the applicant is only seeking 19 rooms in the, in the, in the Blue Rock structure itself, one of the reasons for that is because we're fact-taking into consideration that the, the board, if the board sees fit to grant this request tonight and remove that no commercial use restriction, we would have an additional five guest rooms as a tourist home, but still, five, five guest occupancy units in this structure. Under, under our density analysis, the way, the way the math works is it's, it's eight guest rooms per 25 acres. So, on a, on a property the size of the Blue Rock, which is 79 and 1/2 acres, he's, he's roughly entitled to 24, you know, to a little over, you know, 20, yeah, 24-plus guest occupancy units. So, we've taken that into consideration. This is not an attempt to sort of subvert or work around the maximum occupancy that he would be entitled to if this was just one unsubdivided parcel. We've submitted in our application materials, answered the, the, I guess, stated, the questionnaire answers that deal with all the general standards that apply to your special exception, special use permit analysis. I believe we satisfy those, and it gives you a clear, you know, clear indication of what the plan for the use is. So, we hope that the board will see fit to remove the no commercial use restriction that's in that 2005 special exception permit and allow Mr. Dowling to use this as a tourist home. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board members may have.
I did want to clarify, or make clear at one point, the revised, the May amendments made clear in the definition for tourist home that it is to be rented as one unit as the home. So, getting a permit from the BZA to do that, they're restricted to renting it as one unit, and not each individual room separately.
Right. And that's part of the special use permit that the BZA approved last month at their, at their regular meeting.
How many, how many bedrooms? How many bedrooms?
Five. The, the original structure, I think when Mr. Harvey was building it, and based on the Health Department records, was that it was going to be a seven-bedroom structure.
Right.
Again, to, to comply with the May amendments, which limits for tourist home use, not more than, not more than 10 persons in, in five rooms or five units, that he has scaled back the, the number of rooms in the, in the structure.
So, one entity, basically, would be renting five bedrooms?
That's right. One, one, one group or one family.
Right.
That's right. And that's, that's, that's also, that's, as Mr. Curry was saying, that's a provision now of the, of the tourist home use conditions.
Madam Chair, would it be, I, I recognize a lot of people are here to talk about this, and I wonder if it might be good for us to hear from the public, maybe better inform our own questions, and if you wouldn't mind answering them later?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
So, at this time, I will open the public hearing. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand. You'll come up to the mic and tell us which district you're in. That would be greatly appreciated. And maximum of five minutes per person, please. Yes, ma'am.
Lucy Ann Meyer, better known as Pood, next door Hampton District. It sounds all well and good. However, we've already had an exception to let the private home be there. In short and sweet, it should stay. Should be a private home, not used for commercial at all. Whether it gives the Blue Rock five more rooms or not is not my concern. My concern is it's a commercial on my border, as close as it possibly can, cleared the trees so they can see me better. And it's just not something that I particularly want to live next to for the next god knows how long. And if I have to, I'd rather have one single family in there, living here and being part of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jeanne Lillard from Wakefield District. As Pood mentioned, as part of the condition for allowing that house to be built, it could not be used for commercial use. That was a restriction placed on it in order for it to be built. The owners knew this when they bought it, and we would like for it to stay that way, as a single resident dwelling and not commercial use. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Oops, sorry. Ladies first.
Well, I'm just going to repeat what they've already heard. I'm, I'm the neighbor, and Mitch May. And, you know, I think we're giving them open account rooms. I think they're going to be asking for more, and more, and more. I know for a fact there's going to be a couple houses on my driveway, and that's going to be another meeting at another time. But this group over here, most of us are all in the same, if you ask for short hands, who's against it and who's for it, that might make things a little quicker here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Demaris Miller, Hampton District. I am, I don't have a direct interest in this. I have no property adjacent to this. I have no property within probably five miles of this, maybe within six miles. Have you ever watched a beaver cut down a tree? They don't do it with a chainsaw all at once. They do it chip by chip by chip. And that is how we cut down Rappahannock County. Let's respect Rappahannock County. When people say they are not going to use something for commercial use, and we take their word for it, and we give, give them permission to do something based on that, it should mean something. It should not mean, "Well, that's one chip. You can come back later." Thank you.
Thank you. Please hold applause. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Yoko Barsky from Hampton District. This special exception permit application shows the Blue Rock's intention to expand its operation as a large resort with county, country inn retreat, conference center, equestrian center, retail sales, and eating established, maybe just a few. They may require a separate permit for each of these activities. I don't know. However, tonight's public hearing is with a condition of no commercial use placed on the single residents, that whether that to be removed or not. I was reviewing the prior meeting minutes and the other documents on board docs. I found that the residential building permit for this residence was issued under the condition of no commercial use. This was a promise made by the former owner who built this structure. So, building permit would not have been issued for second dwelling unit on a single parcel. So, that promise still holds for this building. The current owner or his attorney should have known this condition at the time of purchase. Is this the way to develop parcels around here? It is easier to ask for forgiveness than for permission because the zoning laws are not enforced effectively in this county. Sometimes significant applications, such as this one, that can lead to a large commercial resort in an agricultural zone, are not presented to, presented to, and reviewed in detail by the Planning Commission. There isn't enough information attached to this application. I call it incomplete. Many applications are accepted even though they are incomplete or with insufficient information. Large projects require more detailed information to make proper decisions. Insufficient information leads to misunderstandings and more zoning violations. The Virginia Code 15.2-2209 authorizes local governments to adopt a schedule of civil penalties for zoning violations, as I emailed each of you prior to April meeting and then spoke at that meeting. Please consider this seriously. Planning Commission needs to do its duties also, as required in the ordinance 170-139, to refer each item against the ordinance and comprehensive plan and make findings. The VDOB letter in this application package requires some roadwork, or at least the recommended roadwork. Yet, the application is missing a detailed site plan to answer the VDOB letter. Septic issue is also the same thing. This board, Planning Commission, zoning administrator, must require complete documents before you can even consider these applications. So, so that everyone, including the neighbors, county officials, residents, will understand clearly what the application is all about. I urge you to send this application back to the Planning Commission, where the planners can make findings for each requirement in the ordinance, and have the applicant submit more information, including the detailed site plan, not just a conceptual plan. Let us not repeat the relatively sad side of how many manor Skyline Vineyard on Crack Lane. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. You have someone on Zoom, I think?
There was. I don't know if there's going to be us in there.
Anyone else? Oh, yes, ma'am.
The hand went down. Nope, it's back up.
I'm Peggy Spillingcofen. I'm an adjacent property owner. I live on Christmas Tree Lane. I just, I just want to say I agree with what's been said previously. I would add that I think most of your constituents, when they move out here, they understand there's pretty strict zoning. There's a lot of things, even though it's your property, you can't do. And we all abide by them. Most of us. We don't go and try to change things. And I think you should remember that, that this is the way it should be played.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room before I go to Zoom? Yes, ma'am.
I don't have anything prepared. I actually came here for an agenda item I realized was at the 2:00 meeting. I do live, my name is Shannon Ennis. I do live in the Hampton District, close to Blue Rock Inn. I'm going to not sign these people at all and be different. I don't see an issue. If the house is built as to code, not commercial, right now, it could be rented out to a family that will use, utilize your driveways, your roads, all of the uses here in Rappahannock on a daily basis. I think what they're asking is for rental that will most likely be used on weekends. It'll be less traffic than if it was rented monthly or yearly, as if it could be now, per the code of the building permit it was issued. I also don't know if anyone's ever utilized an Airbnb. They're fantastic for you to travel with your family. It's not conducive for a family with children to use a bed and breakfast. They're not quiet. You can't keep your children quiet and, you know, help with people. But if you have your own home that you're renting, it's, it's very, very nice. And that way, I feel like we'll be bringing in tourism and some revenue to the county, which is desperately needed. So, I understand that people don't want a lot of traffic in their neighborhood, but if they rented this house out to a family yearly, you're still going to get the same traffic and noise and usage, so. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Diane Bruce, Piedmont District, and I agree with everything that's been said, except for the last statement. I disagree with that. I think one of the worst problems about removing this commercial restriction is enforcement. I mean, if they can use this building to rent for anything, how, how can we stop them from using it for five bedrooms, or seven bedrooms, or however many bedrooms there are? Because we don't have any way to enforce this kind of thing. So, it should stay just a house, a residence. That's what it was built for. I hear five bedrooms. I hear seven bedrooms. But when Gary Harvey applied for it, according to the Minutes in Minute Book 11, page 301, his house was built as a three-bedroom house for Joe Mariar, who was a prior owner. I don't know how it got to be five bedrooms, and I don't know how it got to be seven bedrooms, but I can tell you, in the past year, I guess, a huge addition has been put on this house. It's on the rear. I had not seen it myself until two days ago. Here is a gentleman who has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars buying a piece of property. Surely, he knew there was a restriction. Surely, he would not put a big addition on it like that. Surely, unless he thought he was going to get it. We grant exceptions. We grant exceptions to exceptions. We must stop this. And I hope you will not remove that restriction on this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold your applause, please. Tell them, Pood. All right. Anybody else? Thank you. Going to Zoom. And I can't see the name.
Was it Dave?
Dave? Can you hear us?
Can you hear you? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm not there in person. I had, I had some other things I had to do to get back to time. I, I want to add my voice. By the way, David Conick from Stonewall, Hampton District. I want to add my voice to all of those except the next up, last speaker who spoke opposing this. And normally, I really wouldn't put my two cents into it, but I, I want the board to consider the ramifications and the precedent that it's going to be setting. Because just as many of the other speakers have said, you know, we drew a map in 1986. We made a commercial zone around the Co-op and the bank area, and it flatlined. And now, it's marching down. And I just want to say, yesterday was the anniversary of Werner Krebs' death. And Werner and I got into it quite a bit about the properties between the Co-op and this one, that the commercial zone was just marching down Route 211. And that's exactly what we see happening now. That special exception permit, which is the highest conditional use permit you can have in zoning, and that's why it goes to the Board of Supervisors, did not come to the supervisors with a unanimous recommendation of approval. It was a split decision, and the reason it was a split decision is because of the concern of this, this commercialism, marching down 211, and where is it going to stop? And also, because agriculture land is going to be taken out of agriculture and turned into commercial use. And just like Demaris Miller said, chip by chip, that's what we see happening in the county today. And the board gave Mr. Harvey the permission on a specific condition that it not be used for commercial purposes. And now, what's the lesson we learn? If this would be granted? Well, you'd just wait a few years, five years, 10 years, and then some new owner, who could have done a, if this is what the owner wanted to do, he could have submitted a contingent contract and tried to get approval as a contract owner, and then not bought it if he didn't get what he wanted to do. But instead, as you heard, they went ahead, and they went ahead at their own risk. And now, they're asking the county, in effect, to bail them out. I want to say something to the lady who spoke about, or in reference to the remarks that she made, about this kind of commercial use isn't any worse than, than a family use or residential use. I heard that many times on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I don't agree with it. When you live in a neighborhood, you have neighbors. That's why it's called a neighborhood. When you live next to a commercial enterprise like this that has five or however many rooms it has, and different people are there all the time, it's a different thing. It's not about traffic, and it's not about water. It's about the character of the neighborhood. And if you have a commercial use like this in an agriculture zone, as Fred Meyer said, you're changing the character of the neighborhood. And that's what the zoning ordinance is designed to protect. And it's your job as the Board of Supervisors not to let it happen. And if you let it happen here, when and where are you ever going to say no? When and where? Because if you say yes to this one, all the conditions that you've put on different permits, and all the conditions that the BZA has put on condition, on, on special use permits over the years, are all, and what's the lesson? Well, let's just go get them rubbed out like an Etch A Sketch and do whatever we want as if they never put those conditions on. Well, they did put them on, and they put them on for a darn good reason. I think you ought to stick to it and send a different message than the one you'd be sending if you approved it. Send a message that the zoning ordinance and the character of the neighborhood and the protection of people who live here and pay taxes here counts, and not commercial uses. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else sign the line?
I see no other hands raised on Zoom.
Last call for Zoom people. All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the board for questions, discussion.
If I could, Madam Chair, I guess it's incumbent upon me to at least address the fact that I was on the board when we put that exception on there. It shows me clearly in the minutes of voting to approve that restriction. And, and it is some truth and to the statement made by Mr. Brown either at this meeting or the Planning Commission meeting, maybe both. But we were having trouble with a flagrant violator of the zoning ordinance.[1724.88] maybe both. But we were having trouble with a flagrant violator of the zoning ordinance. But we were looking down the road because the special exception runs with the property, not that particular owner. And we had a previous board to me being on there. The Blue Rock Inn was created. And we had exactly what Mr. Conick and others have stated. We had commercial use marching west from our commercial district. And this was a way of saying, you know, we went this far and no further. And I think it's significant, and I think that we need to keep it in place. And I heard either, I don't know, maybe I get things confused sometimes, and I know I do, but I heard Mr. Brown saying that they wanted to come back with this country inn. And we may want to subdivide a property. We may want to do this. We may want to do that. And I think, first off, we don't do nothing until we see a master plan. And if we're going to do anything, we do it as one vote, one failsuit, one set of plans, one site plan, whatever. This is piecemeal. And therefore, I'm opposed to it on two grounds. The ground is that we shouldn't overturn the previous board's vote because the house was built with the provision that it not be used for commercial purposes. This purchaser purchased the property knowing that, and I see no reason why we should overturn that decision. And we should certainly not do anything until we see a master plan that's supposedly working its way towards us. And while I'm here, I don't think that we should have taken that tourist home application with this restriction, because I don't see how anybody could actually hear that application when there was this restriction restricting it. And I heard that that was brought up in a certain legal situation here recently. And the judge said, well, y'all heard it. And if we have reasons to not hear things, then we shouldn't hear them. Because then we actually, you know, what's the word I'm looking for here?
Jeopardize.
Well, we jeopardize, but we legalize the situation by hearing something that's not properly before whatever board it comes before. We should just not hear it. Don't legitimize it. If it's not their property, it's not their property, and therefore, we have good reason to not hear it. Send the application back. We didn't do it. We now have a special use permit approved for this tourist home contingent upon this board doing something it may or may not do. And we should have never had that situation arise.
Ms. Smith?
Oh, I would defer to Mr. Whitson. It's in his district. And he's our Planning Commission representative.
Mr. Brown, when I first saw the special use permit application before we were informed that there is a special exception permit overlay with this restriction on that dwelling, it occurred to me that anything other than Tyvek hanging on a half-finished building for 15 years would be better than that. But since that time, you've now put in the queue this application on behalf of your client for a much broader plan for the Blue Rock Inn that may or may not involve adjoining properties. And you've talked a little bit about total number of rooms and how the five bedrooms in this proposed tourist home plus 19 in the Blue Rock Inn would somehow not exceed whatever the room density is for the 78 acres. All of that said, I'd be just curious to get your reaction. And frankly, I agree with much of what Mr. Fraser just said. He beat me to the punch. Does it not seem premature for us to be looking at this question of the condition for no commercial use of that building? Isn't it premature to look at that in isolation, knowing that you have in the queue at the Planning Commission, and eventually will come here, this broader plan for perhaps subdivision and expansion and conference center or country inn? I just, I feel like by looking at this in isolation without seeing the bigger picture for what Mr. Dowling eventually is going to propose to us, it might be too soon. So I'm just curious to get your reaction.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. We approached this initially with the idea that, you know, this structure was, you know, on the property. It was sitting there. And you accurately characterized the condition that it was in when Mr. Dowling bought it. You know, I heard Mr. Conick make a reference to considering the precedent that you would be setting. You know, we were thinking of it in terms of, you know, it is a residential structure. The precedent is that, I think, clearly has been established in the county over the last couple of years is tourist home uses. And that was the intention with this property. One of the public commenters asked about, well, how do you go about enforcing that? Well, I submit to you, it's fairly simple. You pay attention or you require the applicant to come forward and show you what its marketing materials are and show you the records of how that structure has actually been rented to guests. And it will establish, rather than, you know, that they're being rented on an individual basis or marketed on an individual room basis. You can establish that. So I don't buy the you can't enforce this argument. But that was the basis on which we filed that initial application. At this point, there is, I also, I did want to speak to another comment made by another commenter, talking about the incompleteness of the application. And again, the tourist home use application was deemed complete. It was filed with the zoning administrator. It was advanced to the Planning Commission. It was looked at there. That was deemed complete there. And then it went to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And they found all the materials related to this application that's before you this evening to be complete. So I appreciate getting a chance to address a couple of those comments. But that's the basis on which this application was initially filed. There was this existing structure. There is a proposed tourist home use. You know, again, when we start thinking about where tourist home uses have been approved in the county and what zoning districts those uses lie in, I understand the concern about the creep of commercial use westward. But, you know, there has been, and I've heard this comment made in more than one public meeting of the different boards that I've attended, you know, whether that tourist home use is even considered or should be considered a commercial use or not. It's on a lot of different properties in the agricultural and the conservation zoning districts. So I would argue that the approval of this tourist home use for this structure is not expanding commercial use out to 11. The commercial use is the Blue Rock Inn property. And that's the application that the Planning Commission already has before it. Those materials, we believe, are complete. It's been noticed and advertised for, it'll be advertised for public hearing later this month. Those application materials are readily available and would answer a lot of those questions. Let me say this finally, Mr. Whitson. If it is the board's inclination to simply vote down this request this evening, I would ask on behalf of the applicant, the board's indulgence, to defer action on this. If the board believes that it is better to take this question up at the same time the broader Blue Rock application is taken up, assuming it advances beyond the Planning Commission, maybe it doesn't, then I'd ask that this board defer action on this application rather than a flat denial and echo Mr. Whitson's, I think, ideas that maybe it's better to look at it in the overall broader picture of the Blue Rock application. We'd ask that you approve it tonight. But if you're going to turn this down flat, we'd like for you to defer action on that until the broader application is before you.
Thank you. Good answer. No, and clearly, there's broad public interest in what happens with the Blue Rock property. And I can't, from where I said I can't view that, I can no longer view that dwelling and the special use permit application and the current condition in isolation. So, that said, I feel like we ought to, my thinking now, and pending hearing from my colleagues, for the sake of public interest and for the sake of our own consideration of the overall picture of what is intended or what the applicant is seeking for that property as a whole, we should defer a decision on this until we can look at everything all at once. Thanks for your answer.
Mr. Parrish?
Well, firstly, I'd like to confirm that this is own agriculture, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Secondly, I'd like to refer to Mr. Conick's comment that the vote was a split decision on the VZA, but I'm looking at the record of decision, and nobody voted against it. So it was, in my opinion, not a split decision. Thirdly, I would like to say that I agree with the lady in the back, Shannon, that everything she said in general makes sense. However, it's something a little suspicious about the whole thing. I mean, there's a Tesla charging unit in the back of the house. And there is, you know, at least three bedrooms in the addition, it looks to me like, and we just came from there. And so I would be not inclined to approve this until we see what the whole picture is. And I'm perfectly fine to send it back to the Planning Commission to let them do the initial research. And I'm also fine with just waiting to see what their entire plan is in general. But I don't see, you know, that it's a completely detrimental idea for the, you know, long-term benefit of the county. But I don't think we should approve it tonight.
Ms. Smith?
I just want to say that I agree with the folks that have turned out tonight. I think, based on the numbers alone, we should keep the original conditions in place and not allow a commercial use in this building. I think it is sort of drawing a line. I don't know that I need to wait and see the whole picture to make a decision about this. However, our legal counsel is not in attendance this evening, so I would want to make sure we are on firm legal footing in terms of upholding the original terms of the special exception and how we send this away so that it doesn't come back.
Thank you. I would have to agree that I don't, I stayed in the Blue Rock when it was Joe's. And first of all, I can't figure out where 19 rooms are coming from. So that, I'd have to take another tour, I guess. And did we know about the addition to the house that we're talking about?
Well, it's a residential structure, so I don't know if there was an addition or not an addition, but...
Okay.
It's a byright used to add an addition to your home.
So I think it would be better to have a true understanding of the big picture, definitely. And being in the restaurant business, I would highly recommend he may want to consider having a house for staff, not Airbnb, because it is not easy. So I think I would also like to delay and wait for the total presentation.
Is there any timeline attached to how quickly we have to deal with this?
There is. 170-55F provides the board 120 days to deliberate before which you must make a decision. It does say it could be extended if you're waiting on reports from review bodies. But it does not say that the applicant can request an extension. I know that shows up elsewhere in our code, so we may have to look a little bit closer at that.
I just have a technical question. Our experience last year with the country inn on Clark Lane, that application, I believe that's a special exception permit application.
It was at that time.
Oh, right. Okay. So that's, this is another key question. I want to make sure that we're going to be hearing...
The application is moving through the Planning Commission right now. It's for a conference center slash resort because the applicant is desiring to have more than 40 people attend events. So the code has a split, less than 40 is a country inn and goes to the VZA. More than 40 is a conference center slash resort and goes to the Board of Supervisors. Beyond those two, that distinction, the uses are essentially the same.
Just confirming that our local governing body will hear the bigger picture application.
Well, I mean, the applicant could withdraw it. I mean, I can't say you will hear it. But it is, as applied for, it is a special exception use. They could tailor their use to have all the numbers be less than 40. It would be an SUP.
I've got two questions. One is, do we have time, if we send it back to the Planning Commission, will they have time to incorporate this issue in with their existing?
I don't know that there's a pathway to do that, quite frankly, inside the code.
Send it back to the Planning Commission? Okay. Another thing, though, it hadn't been brought up or addressed, but I mean, Mr. Brown alluded that the home would be basically five bedrooms that could be used as part of the 24 that they were allowed with the inn. But they're talking about, and I heard Mr. Brown say something about possible subdivision, but a tourist home has to have so many acres. And if you take the tourist home out with so many acres, then how many bedrooms are you allowed to have over at the inn? I mean, we've got to have a comprehensive idea of what's going on.
And so, we should defer it, no?
Yeah.
I hate to interrupt. Madam Chairman, if you wouldn't mind, Ms. Bruce has braced her hand, and I would ask that she be recognized.
I'm just curious, does this come back to you or does it go to the VZA after the Planning Commission hears? Does it go to the VZA or does it come before?
This matter for the special exception to allow more than one dwelling on a lot without a restriction for commercial is, went to the Planning Commission, is now at the Board of Supervisors. There is a parallel application to use this structure, this particular home, as a tourist home, to rent it to visitors that come in. That went to the VZA. It was approved by the VZA to be used as a tourist home if and only if the Board of Supervisors says they will remove this commercial restriction. In addition, there's a new application for the Blue Rock to, I guess, modernize the Blue Rock permit, for lack of any better definition. And that will be going to the Planning Commission and ultimately to the Board of Supervisors.
Not to the VZA?
Correct.
And I would just say, too, that I also have misgivings about the bifurcated process of the two applications for the tourist home and for this simultaneously. I think it sets up an unhealthy relationship and chain of events where we should have heard this before the VZA decided if a tourist home could even be permitted here.
That's what I talked about, maybe not being properly before us.
I'm agreeing with you.
Or not being properly before them, rather. It should have came to us to lift that restriction. I tried to make that argument a month or so ago in our board meeting. And Mr. Curry said that he and Mr. Goff agreed that there was nothing in our ordinance that prohibited someone from making an application like that. But I beg to differ. And like I said, I heard in a recent ruling or a judge opine that that complaint was no good. If you hear the application, you're basically legitimizing it.
Well, and the conditions placed on the original special exception indicate that it shouldn't have been accepted, and it shouldn't have been set up to the VZA.
Right.
Mr. Curry, not to beat a dead horse, but I just want to make sure I have a clear understanding of the process. So in the Zone Administrator Staff Report for the broader Blue Rock application, if that's the right way to describe it, and this goes to Ms. Bruce's question, I just want to make sure we're all, we all understand the same thing. So it's an SUP permit application. And in the first line, it says to replace the current special exception permits for a new special use permit for a country.
So when it was first applied for, it was applied for as an SUP, being a country inn?
Yep.
Because it was issued as a country inn in 2005?
Yep.
In 2005, the code broke country ins into two categories, using more or less than five acres. So apparently, it was, or maybe it went back into the 90s, whatever it was. It was issued as SUP. Upon reviewing the application and the applicant's request to have events with a number of people exceeding 40 people, it doesn't fit the definition of a country inn. It fits the definition of conference center slash resort. Had that conversation with the applicant, and they have recognized that definition and are moving forward as a special exception for a conference center slash resort, and be advertised as such when it gets to the public hearing stage.
Perfect. Thank you.
And Mr. Whitson, an amendment to that application action file.
All right. With that, I will go ahead and put forward a motion that we defer any action on the removal of the condition on that dwelling for no commercial use, that we defer any action until the Board of Supervisors considers the pending...
You have to do it within 120 days.
120 days.
So...
Okay. All right. Okay, let me back it up. We are going to defer taking any action with respect to the existing condition on that dwelling for not allowing a commercial use.
So basically, SE 210302, deferring action on special exception 210302.
Which is the original.
Yeah. No, that's this one, which this issue's a new special exception without that restriction. And you're deferring it until when? Doesn't have to be a date certain, but...
No, no later than 120 days from... No, no later than 120 days from.
Hmm.
What if, I don't know what the, I don't know, it's 120 days from when?
When it first appeared on the agenda, which is the board's agenda.
Okay. So no, no later than 120 days from the date of this meeting?
Okay.
I'd be willing to second that motion, but I would ask that it be amended to reflect that it appear back on our August agenda. I think we're going to need some time to work through this. I think we have quite a few things on the agenda for July. I think 60 days is appropriate to see how the things move forward and for us to revisit this and if we need to just touch base with it and then put it off until September, so be it, but I, I don't want to wait, I don't want 120 days to be the trigger. I'd like to revisit it in August.
So I'm reading defer action to no later than 120 days from today's board meeting and have it back on the agenda in August at your regular meeting.
That's fine.
Fine with me.
We could defer it again.
Yep. All right. We have a motion. And I think Ms. Smith, you said you'd second?
If Mr. Whitson's willing to amend to include the August.
Yep.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thanks for coming out, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, this is just regular.
We are now moving into public comment about everything but the public hearing. If there's anyone that has public comment, would you please raise your hand and be recognized? Yes, ma'am?
I want to urge.
Please, yeah.
Sharon Kilpatrick, currently Hampton District after many years in Stonewall. I want to urge you, please, to put the share shed, open the share shed back up. It made perfect sense to me that it was closed because if there's anywhere that they were not observing any kind of social distancing, it was there. But once we're on the other side of all of this COVID restrictions, I hope it'll be open again, and I frankly think the traffic pattern thing is looking for an excuse not to open it. I would have no trouble dropping my trash in the compactor and driving around the people in cars that are using the share shed if I didn't intend to be putting something in or taking something out. When it closed, and also when the Democratic Party decided not to have a yard sale, I rented a cube down at Clevenger's Corners to store stuff I want to give away. Now, that seems kind of crazy, but I've been doing it for more than a year, and I would like to get a lot of that stuff out of my cube and where it can be used by somebody else. I've observed people there that seem to be picking up stuff to have yard sales. Now, that bothers some people, but it doesn't bother me. It's another way to get stuff recycled, so, and, and also the issue of who's going to keep it clean. I'm very fond of Willie Shanks, but I don't think he's overworked. I think he could move stuff out that isn't moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Gary knows that I've spoken to him twice at least about the share shack. I've also spoken to Willie Shanks. Okay, so you've got a parking problem, you've got a traffic problem. You know what you do when you have a problem like that? You use some of your genius to fix it. You don't just keep the share shack closed. There are people who need the share shack to recycle things. There are people who need what's in the share shack. You think that the thrift store is good enough. There are people who cannot afford the thrift store. I have seen people shopping in there for Christmas, for their children. I have seen people shopping in there who needed a warm coat. I have seen people shopping in there who needed it to sell at another yard sale because they needed the cash. And you know what? That's fine, like Sharon says, it's still recycling, but closing that shack is hurting a lot of people, not just those of us who are filling our basements with stuff we would like to put to good use, but is not quite good enough to sell in the thrift store. But it's still very good and could be recycled if you would just open the dead gum share shack. Thank you.
Thank you. Damaris. Anyone else in the courthouse?
Hopefully it's not their first decision.
Seeing no hands, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to comment? Nope. All right. I'm not seeing any hands there either, so I'll move that we close the public comment period.
The next thing, save the share shack.
Save the share shack. All right. We are going into, we don't have any presentations. Old business.
It's almost like you planned to have the share shack next on the agenda.
Yes.
Perfect timing.
Perfect. All right. So we're in the new business Flatwood Refuse and Recycling Center, also the share shed, no names.
I asked for this to be on the agenda because frankly, of, of all the things going on in the county, this is the thing I hear the most complaints about, that the share shack's not open. I, I, just to agree with Damaris Miller, I, I think that there may be some concerns associated with reopening the share shack, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't talk about it and figure out a way to do it. It has, I think, created issues with, you know, people not being able to recycle their things, people not being able to get things that maybe they need. It also, we haven't really talked about this, but by not putting those things in the dumpster by figuring out a way to reuse them, we're saving the county money. I realize that it does create an additional burden and layer of work for the county employees, so we do maybe need to think about how it's appropriate for it to operate. Do we want to engage volunteers? Do we want to make hours regarding it? Do we, but I think whatever we need to do, we need to figure out how to get it open. Or if we're not going to get it open, you need to tell people that, but I think we should figure out how to get it open.
There's been a lot of, I don't know if it's misinformation or disinformation that the board didn't have, but there's, the social media is abuzz with what the county says, what the county's going to do, and I'm just wondering, if the county made this decision, how come I don't know about it? So, I mean, that's a question anybody wants to dive in and answer, but if, if the county has made decisions about what we're going to do with the share shed, I'd like to know because I, I kind of feel bad that I don't know these things.
I don't read social media, so I got no idea on that one, but I will make a motion that we reopen the share shack and see what happens.
Well, I don't think it's quite that simple because I, I was by there sometime in, you know, several months before this COVID thing, and it was kind of rough in there.
Yeah.
It can be rough.
So I think we need to, we had, we need to figure out a way to, to do it, make it safe, keep it clean type of thing. If, if we need volunteers to do it, we stay step forward. There's a bunch of people saying that they will do that, and, you know, honestly, I live so close to Amosville, I hardly ever go up to Flatwoods and throw anything off, okay? So I'm, I'm kind of relying on y'all to, to tell me what's happening up there at Flatwoods. I don't have anything against Flatwoods. I think it's a really nice place. I just got a landfill down in my way I can use a whole lot easier.
Well, the good news is Flatwoods is a lot easier to drive around than Amosville just, just because of the property. So I think we just have to figure out, I don't know, this is something we have to figure out now, but what are the issues? I mean, one is inventory turnover in that share shack prior to the pandemic was blacked. There were just piles of clothes.
And that's one of my questions, is it, is it currently empty? Has it been emptied? Or is it still full? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, Gary, but you have the answer.
There are items in the building as we speak. I wouldn't use them for.
Right. I was going to say, so probably whatever's been there for the last year and a half needs to be treated as refuse and taken away.
Former employees had to repurpose many items in that building on a very routine basis and get as much of the material into other recyclable containers as possible, not recyclable, to other reused containers, blue boxes. We had an agreement with the schools for a little while where they, person who was packing young material, the same people that take the material from the Washington thrift store and take to West Virginia, they were helping us. I, you know, as far as the operation, as long as as much is leaving as is coming in, fine with me.
That's the issue.
I personally, professionally, I don't want to be on the hook for the safety of some little lady getting run over, and that's, that's my position. So the board can take an altering decision, and that's what I will deploy. I will do that. We can put a Jersey wall in there, and then the damage is somebody runs into the Jersey wall. At least we have a damaged car and not a damaged person.
And we've had accidents.
We've had people jam on the accelerator, run into the containers, had people run over themselves in their own car.
That was very tragic.
I'm telling you, I've never been up here since the, the containers were put in. It wasn't me.
Well, let's, let's get it reopened and all think how, how it can be improved. I mean, somebody sent me a photo of, I don't know, maybe, maybe you sent, somebody sent me a photo of a similar thing in Madison County that.
Apparently it's closed right now.
Maybe you sent that. It's very neat and tidy. Somebody sent.
The Mad Rap had it in their newspaper.
That's where it was, okay. We, I mean, we can improve upon it, so let's, it will help you and try to figure out some specific ways to, to implement it. I'll second Chris's motion if it's a motion to make.
To open it?
Yeah.
Without resolving any of these issues?
Well, we got to clean it. Whoever works at the landfill.
Well, that, that's, we'll, but, that's.
Or Rick here, somebody's going to have to.
So we agree, let's open it and then clean it out.
And is it, is the best location? It wouldn't, wouldn't help to move, I know it's.
I've, I've had conversations with the former principal and the building trades person at the high school about helping to build a, building in a different location. They're generally interested, but it's, we have a new principal coming in and things are changing, and depends on what students are in, what classes.
We can open it now.
We have a motion and a second, so I have to go into discussion.
I would also just say too, that if, if this is as important to folks as I hear it is all the time, it would really be helpful if we could develop a pool of talent that was willing to help us, you know, go through things and throw out what really should be trash and keep what really should be recycled materials so that it doesn't create a burden on our employees. And, you know, if folks have a heart and an interest in the share shed, if they could call the county office and offer to volunteer to come in a couple hours a week to go through materials and make those decisions, somebody needs to make those decisions, and it does create an additional layer of work for county employees.
The board did have a conversation about this building, maybe, geez, with COVID, it was probably a year and a half or two years ago about, do you want to put any rules or regulations? And the board was disinclined to put any rules or regulations at that time on the facility, people being there all day or not. And I'm of a mind like others here, if it leaves the building, it's good.
Right.
So if it's leaving the building, being sold by somebody, great.
Right.
So would it make sense along those lines to advertise for volunteers? I mean, there's a whole county of volunteers here.
Or, or maybe one of the newspapers would write a nice article saying that we would like to see some volunteers.
For free.
For free, come out to the share shed, please, and offer their services, and if they're interested, if they could reach out to the county offices, we'll start to get that pool of talent together.
Somebody's definitely going to have to control, you know, what time, who's working when, and all the scheduling and stuff like that. It's not just reopening it.
That's unlikely to happen. I mean, it's possible, it's unlikely to happen, and apparently Madison has learned that it didn't work there with a formalized document, but I would certainly welcome people to come help provide order. You're going to then run into some issues of that volunteer thinks they're empowered to tell a visitor what they can and can't do, why are they empowered? Can you stay? Can you not? Who gets to take what? You're taking too many things.
No, we're not going.
All right. We have a, want to close discussion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of opening the share shed now, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
There are Board of Supervisors candidates right now who are listening and in attendance are going, wow, is this, is this what we do on this? But it is important to people, and I'm glad that we can at least get the tarp off and move forward.
Get it cleaned out.
We've got closets full of stuff ready to go.
All right. We're to local government actions related to the pandemic and declaration of local emergency.
Yes. Board has discussed this several times, or at least a couple times since first declaring local emergency way back in March, and then ratified by the board in April. But as you're aware, Code of Virginia empowers the Directive of Emergency Management to declare a local emergency and then requires the board to ratify that, I believe, within 45 days now. And also in that same section states that the governing body, when in its judgment, all emergency actions have been taken, shall take appropriate action to end the declared emergency. So if and when the board is of a mind to end the emergent, local emergency, that action must be done by resolution. Similarly, the board has taken and adopted a continuity of government ordinance, amended a few times, but you still have in the books a continuity of government ordinance, and that continuity of government ordinance can remain in effect for six months following the emergency, at least until July comes around when the new law kicks in, and it'll be 12 months after the emergency. But in reviewing your continuity of government ordinance, it doesn't appear as though there really is any need to keep that in effect for six or 12 months, and if the board is of a mind to pass a resolution to rescind the emergency, then it probably makes sense to advertise a public hearing to repeal the continuity of government ordinance, and both of those actions could be taken at your next meeting if the ordinance amendment was properly advertised.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we authorize county staff to prepare necessary documents to advertise a public hearing for our July board meeting to consider repealing the continuity of government ordinance.
Second to that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a quick item of discussion. I, I know in the past it's come up that repealing certain things might jeopardize our opportunities for funding, and I just wanted to make sure that nothing that we were taking action on would jeopardize anything.
We would not be able to go and seek reimbursement for FEMA funding, but with all the funding being pushed, it is clear from other localities that, for example, the CARE CRF funds and, and the ARPA funds, they're being pushed whether you have a local declaration or not.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks. Good question.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
The Board of Supervisors should be aware that the county, based on population, will be receiving $1,431,536. That is being provided in two tranches, $715,768 is already received, as you noted on your cash fund chart earlier today in the meeting. So those dollars are in hand. There are some high-level bullet points here that identify in general. There are some high-level bullet points here that identify in general what the funds can be used for. And there are attached very detailed requirements in the interim final rule. It is open for comment right now, and it could change. Earlier in the meeting, or was that a different meeting? I believe in a different meeting today, there was a discussion about using funding for broadband. When people have asked me in the past, I've suggested that the board of supervisors likely would be focusing on broadband and public safety. But broadband comes with a very big caveat that the service must, must deliver services offering reliable 100 megabit down and 100 megabit up unless impractical due to geographic, geography and financial costs. And I say that, even that caveat, when you look at the interim final rule, it does allow a reduction of the upload speed, but it does not appear to offer any reduction in the download speed. There are a lot of people looking at this and a lot of comments going into the federal government. It could change, but the trillions of dollars being invested by the feds, it appears that they are looking for solutions that are going to last more than five years. And, you know, I can't read tea leaves any better than that. There are several other ways the board could invest these dollars. You can support public health expenditures, medical expenses, behavioral healthcare, certain public health and safety, public health and safety staff. Don't think we have a lot of those expenditures. You can address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, including economic harms to workers, households, small businesses. So you could do small business grants again. You can replace lost public sector revenue. This is a big difference between this and the CRF funds. And there may be an opportunity for us to claim some of the dollars through this opportunity and then use them for anything else you want. Because the interim final rule includes a provision that you can claim any revenue, lost revenue is based on a 4.1% increase in your revenue of your last full year of revenue. So if you project out from that last full year, 4.1%, two or three years into the future, then you can compare against that and just claim whatever's off the tongue. And we generally, because we're not a growth community, we don't see 4.1%. So there's a little bit there. Provide premium pay to essential workers, offering additional support to those who have borne and will bear greatest health risk. I don't believe that will come into play. And then lastly, invest in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. We don't do water and sewer, and, I mean, our local authority does. And you could arguably invest there. If the town will receive their own money, this does not require, like CARES, where the county had to provide an equitable share, town is receiving, last I checked, $115,000. So they can invest in their own utility and hopefully solve some of their utility concerns that they've been talking about in their meetings. So I would like to look at the requirements in more detail, but if the board had certain areas, it would help focus that review in more detail. The links to the interim final rule are in this agenda item. I encourage you to go read the very long document.
And maybe it was Ms. Smith, who, I think you mentioned this earlier, would it make sense for us to organize a special meeting to kind of go through options publicly like we did for the first two rounds of the CARES Act funds?
I would say yes at some point.
Yep.
But I think what wasn't said is that these funds have to be spent by December 31, 2024. We don't want to wait two years and then figure out what you're going to do with them. But there is some time, and it's not as fast-paced as the CRF funds. I think we need to allow this information to bake in a little bit, understand where the easy options are, where our greatest needs are, see how they align a little bit, and see what comes of possible changes to the interim final rule, which the name is really amazing, interim final rule. But I guess it'll be a final, final rule after it's done being interim.
Right.
So if you had a work session now, we may spend our entire time flipping through the interim final rule to determine whether you can do something or not, rather than wait for some very capable agencies to develop some very nice, frequently asked questions and documents to help parse that language.
So is the interim final rule open currently to public comment?
Yes.
And that public comment will be absorbed in whatever the final rule is, I guess.
I, I can't tell you how likely it is that anything will change from those public comments.
But there's still solicitors.
There's a potential that it will. But, for example, I imagine every broadband provider on the planet who doesn't provide 100-100 is commenting on the interim final rule.
Right.
Does it make sense for us as a locality to comment on the interim final rule? And that the 100-100 is prohibitive for us and presents challenges that we're not sure we can overcome as a rural county?
So that's a very interesting.
I'm sure we could be joined by many counties. I'm sorry to interject, but I mean, we share the same topography as many counties do.
And Virginia's getting $7 billion. So, yeah, we could probably go to the state and say, we don't want 100-100, we want 25-3. Don't send your $7 billion to us. We only want, you know, a million. If the state wants to give you 10 million to do 100-100, take it. We don't know what is in the works.
I just think through some sort of rural county consortium or something, we can, you know, go ask that there be a waiver to that of some sort.
Yeah, and so unless we, unless we know how much money is about to flow, I might, we might not want to be asking to reduce those requirements. They, there may, I mean, there is unprecedented amount of money available for these programs in the state.
It's a double-edged sword.
It is. So, you know, I don't know that you want to get out too far ahead of it yet. As another body we met today discussed, there's VODI coming up, and there are deadlines. And many people think that if you're not in line for this body, then you're not going to be in line for all of that, all those billions of dollars going to the state that's being pushed out. That will have the ARPA strings attached to it.
Right.
Thank you.
We're gonna get it whether we want it or not.
We, well, that is ultimately, the biggest challenge will be, one way or another, this board will have to find the best way to invest $1.4 million within the confines and rules of the program.
One thing, and I'm not sure if you heard back from all supervisors on this, Gary, but I do wish that we would reach out to all our fire and rescue companies to see if they have any needs that we should, that we should meet on the front end. And I guess it sort of begs the question, are we going to use this to pay for the money that was spent earlier today on the Chester Gap agreement?
Well, and that's a.
Because I don't think we talked about how we're going to fund that.
You did not. And so that is a topic that needs to be addressed. It can be, the leftover CARES money, if I can phrase it that way, the cash that was freed up from the CARES money can definitely be used for that. I believe the ARPA money can be used for that based on, address negative economic impacts caused by, or, where was it? The public health and safety one. So that's probably, you can draw a line to that.
We can also apply for a safer grant finally.
And trust me, I've informed Mr. Pollster that that should be high on his list to understand exactly what our opportunities are for career and for volunteer. So I don't know what's the answer.
And then loss of revenue, you know, from anything that the companies have.
And that's where I'm not sure, where the CARES Act did have that clear line. And I'm preparing our documents right now, due Friday, to upload to the portal for our CARES Act auditing through the state. And so that, that's part of the information they want to look at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, we opted to go to matters presented by the board or, I wrote down matters presented by the board. Mr. Curry wrote down information reports and correspondence, as well as matters presented by the board.
Well, I'm glad that you did ask that question, Madam Chair, because I thought perhaps since we jumped ahead like that, maybe we did want to talk about the reassessment process timeline, if there's anything there that we may have to be acting on soon.
Was that when we were gonna ask Ms. Graham to come in?
Yes, and so just to, if board members have not had an opportunity to review this attachment of the 2022 reassessment timeline, Ms. Graham did a very good job of identifying the various steps along the way. And then on page three, she writes completely about the Board of Equalization ordinance. We have a local ordinance that sets certain timeframes. And you can see she put a table down here at the bottom, on the right of that table, current ordinance, and then based on the progress of the various tasks, what the earliest date and the latest date she thinks they might be. I do think it's a good idea to have her make a recommendation, but it does look like the ordinance probably should be adjusted to better align with how we're doing things these days to make sure that we can still get the process finished in a proper time. But I will, I think I was instructed earlier to perhaps have Ms. Graham at the next meeting.
Yes.
Ask her anyway.
Anything else in that section that we don't want to miss?
I'm confident that all of the information is important, and the board members will review it all. Another rather large number in the building permit report, $2.2 million. So there's a lot of building activity happening, whether it be renovations, additions, new structures. It's out there. And I think you've probably seen some of that. Even if there aren't houses for sale, then people are having to do the only other thing you can do, which is either expand or renovate your house or build a new one. And our inventory is getting much, much lower.
All right, if we agree, I'd like to move on to matters presented by the board. Mr. Fraser, do you want to begin?
I don't have anything specific right now.
Ms. Smith?
I, I have some concerns about the state of the grounds here at the courthouse. And I wish, or I would hope that perhaps, you know, there seems to be a lot of debris and still leaves and cigarette butts, weeds. And I know we're getting ready to paint the courthouse. And I was wondering if like a late spring cleanup day, if the inmates were available to come and the trustees were available to us to do a cleanup day?
Is there a particular location?
Just through, I would say throughout the whole courthouse grounds. And there's a, there's a brick missing in front of one of the offices here. And just general weeding, some of the light landscaping.
The inmates were just here and just mulched everything, reetched the beds, put the mulch out, did all that like two weeks ago. But certainly we can please the grounds.
Yeah, I would say the grounds need some attention. And if you, if you check in with the folks in the offices, they might be able to offer some additional guidance too. I think there's concerns over some poison ivy, things like that, that we definitely don't want folks getting into contact with. I also heard from a constituent, and I know we are working on broadband and want that to be very successful. I did hear from a constituent who REC reached out to running broadband lines through his property. And I wondered if there was a place for this board to contact REC and encourage them not to run those lines through private property, but to keep them on the roadsides.
Well, the REC is in the process of deploying their fiber network between their substations along their transmission line within their easement. As long as that fiber is used for their electrical purposes, they have legal right to do it. The lawsuit that came up and kind of, kind of messed up the whole REC going in Arduv was about using those fiber lines for broadband.
Commercial, correct.
And, and basically that's why REC pulled out. So I don't believe there's anything the county can really do to have REC not run the fiber along their transmission line. They're putting in the electrical zone of the transmission poles. I don't know how we could really, that's their legal right to use that easement.
I guess it's not a legal sort of thing. It's a, you know, if we're trying to build goodwill regarding broadband locally in a rural county where landowners, you know, have certain feelings about what happens on their property.
Yeah.
It's more of a, we would appreciate your help by maybe not running your lines through folks' property if you can run them other places.
And you heard earlier that this may be the tip of the iceberg of, you think you're going to deploy broadband and use the various overhead lines and poles that are already there. And many citizens may not be interested in that.
Correct.
So, and if you have to get easements because of the court case going on now, it may cause issues. But it would probably be very expensive for REC to relocate a line to below ground where, area where they already have poles. And I can't imagine them doing that. Mr. Price was on the line earlier today.
I know I missed the opportunity, but we had a courtroom full of people.
Mr. Whitson?
I just want to congratulate one of my constituents, Mrs. Toni Updike. The Updikes are fixtures in the Rappahann County community. She just retired after 35 years as a pre-K teacher at the Wakefield School in the plains. So I just want to state publicly my congratulations to her. And she made a huge contribution at that school, and she should be recognized for, for that many decades in a difficult part of our educational system, so.
Mrs. Updike has been there so long, she was my volleyball coach.
Yeah, and so she, she won.
And she was a great one.
Mr. Parrish? And I don't have anything either. All right, unless there's any other discussion, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith, Mr. Parrish, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Excellent, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, colleagues.